Good evening, Winthrop. This is the council president, Phil Boncorry. And tonight, we are having our town council meeting of April 21st, 2020 remotely. The council and our most department heads are on Zoom from their homes. And all residents are invited to be in the audience of this Zoom meeting. Residents can listen and participate in public comment by clicking on the Town of Winthrop website from your home computer or a smartphone. The link can be found at the homepage in the News and Announcements section, or by calling from their home phones, and entering the following webinar ID number, I will announce that again because it's important. You will be on the phone. Your phone will be muted. But if you can hear us on your computer, you are on. We know you're there. When it's time for you to speak during public comment, our manager will unmute you and we can hear you live as if you were present, you know, at a regular meeting. Again, the webinar ID number is 936-67460758. I will now call the meeting to order. I believe it is 7:03, 7:05. This is April 21st, 2020. We are remotely on channel 22, WCAT. And this meeting will be shown through WCAT on numerous later occasions. All right. Can I please have, let's see, Councilor Latieri, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Thank you. Can we still stand for a moment of silence? We have a prenago for the four Winthrop residents that have passed by the Corona Vid-19. It learned today that there were two people who had passed in the past two weeks that we had not got notice of before today. So it brings our total to four. So please have a moment of silence and a prayer for them and for all our first responders and the people on the front lines of this pandemic who are keeping many more people from dying because of the work they're doing. Please take a moment of silent prayer for them. Denise, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilor Jero.
Here.
Councilor Flahcut.
Here, but I'm muted.
Nope, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay. Councilor Christopher.
Yeah.
Councilor Honan.
Here.
Councilor LaConti.
Present.
Councilor Farino.
Here.
Vice President Latieri.
Frozen.
President Boncorry.
Here.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 7th, 2020 meeting? I believe everybody received them.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes? Anybody offer any amendments? Hearing none, would you please take a roll call? All those in favor, please answer yes.
Councilor Jero.
Yes.
Councilor Flahcut.
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco. Councilor Christopher.
Yeah.
Councilor Honan.
Yes.
Councilor LaConti.
Yes.
Councilor Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Vecchio.
President Vecchio.
Yeah, he's gone.
Oh, Boncorry!
Thanks so much, Denise.
It's been a long isolation.
That's it.
Seeing on TV, I'm nervous. Thank you.
Next, the item on the agenda is general information and recommendations. And there was a lot going on today as far as the COVID. And the Board of Health had a meeting at 5 o'clock and have come up with an order that they would like us to pass as a new ordinance under new business. But I'd like to have a Director of Health, Meredith Hurley, online. I believe she's on.
Yeah.
Meredith, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
Yeah, I'm in the studio.
There you are.
I'm here with both the chiefs and the EOC.
Okay, great. I was fortunate, I saw Meredith earlier in the EOC and got an update. But I'd like her to give the update to the whole town. And were you also present at the Board of Health meeting, Meredith?
Yeah, I was. So I'm actually just pulling up the emergency order. So the Board of Health met at 5 o'clock this evening to talk about some additional efforts that could be made to prevent the transmission of COVID-19. So in particular, the focus was on mandating face coverings in essential businesses. And right now, we're seeing a few businesses that are making it mandatory for people when they go into essential businesses. So my big concern is about asymptomatic spread. We're seeing some additional confirmed cases of people that are not showing the traditional symptoms. So what the mandated face coverings would do would be to prevent asymptomatic spread. So they put together an emergency order that takes up the essential businesses and also multi-unit dwellings for dwellings that are greater than one unit. When residents or people working within the building, they need to wear a face covering within six feet of others. And also, in regards to restaurants, they are looking for the same with face coverings while at work and when people are working within six feet of each other and also when they're working directly with the public and also when they're working directly with food. So that's their, they put this draft together. They're going to finalize it. The way it's written is that it'll be effective beginning Thursday, April 23rd, at 6:00 a.m. and remain in effect until further notice.
Okay. I think one of our councils will read this and has an emergency motion on the new business. But I wanted you to give the update and how this came about. And can you tell us a little bit more about the numbers today and the...
Sure. So we have 104 confirmed cases as of today. We've unfortunately had four deceased. And we are moving more people to the recovered side as they're coming out of isolation.
Meredith, does that recovered number, is that included in the 104?
Yep, it's 104 total. And then the recovered number is, let me, hold on. So 104 total with 44 recovered and 56 still in isolation.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Meredith on the council?
Meredith, I think I've asked this before, but just for clarification, the people who are in isolation, we're not being told the breakdown in terms of whether they're in the hospital or they're self-isolating. Is that correct?
No, I keep track on where people, who's self-isolated and who's in the hospital.
Okay.
And I want to thank a big thank you to Meredith because since this broke way back over a month ago, she has traced every single person that has tested positive. She has been to their houses. She's been in touch with whoever they've talked to. And she has traced all of these people in an effort to keep us safe and to keep the people that need to be quarantined, quarantined. And she's done the Oma's job, you know. She's working probably about 80 hours a week because she's doing this on Saturdays and Sundays too. And I see her and I talk to her almost every single day. And she is really putting a big effort into it. And I want to thank Meredith. I want to also thank our chiefs, all the people that are working in the EOC. I mean, the EOC is manned by about six or eight people every day. And those people are there all day long. And I want to thank them. I want to thank the people that are working in the food banks and the people that are donating to the food banks. Winthrop people have come forward to help. And most of, every single person that works for the town is also beside doing their work, volunteering either at the food bank or the EOC or doing something in addition to their work to help this town go forward and to be safe. So I want to thank you all while we're right here and while Meredith's face is on the screen. I want to thank her. Thank you.
No, thank you. And I have to say, I can't take all the credit. I mean, when this thing kind of ramped up, I feel like both Chief Lannigan and Chief Delahanti in particular really stepped up because they have this, they have the institutional knowledge of what it is to do crisis management. So as a department head with primarily just one person, I would have easily been able to drown as this crisis ramped up. So they've allowed me to be able to do the contact tracing and to kind of combat things on the local level while they're helping run point on so many different things. A great example was yesterday, we pulled together a team of seven people, Chief Lannigan, a team of seven people where we tested about 120 residents and staff, about 100 residents and staff at the Park at Harborview. It was a joint effort between myself, the fire department, and Action Ambulance where we were quickly able to get a group together for, to test everybody in the facility in about three hours and got those tests kits off to the Broad Institute in Harvard and just awaiting. It was proactive because obviously, our elder population is our most at risk and the ones that we're really focusing on in preventing this transmission. So that was something that I think is pretty unique to Winthrop.
Yes. And thank you. And I know that you did about 140, 150 tests yesterday.
We did about... Yeah, we were there most of the day. We got there about 11 o'clock yesterday morning and wrapped up just after 4:00.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else have any questions for Meredith? Either of the chiefs want to say something while you're right there with them? Meredith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. How are you?
And thank you for the work you're doing in the EOC as well with Chief Lannigan.
Thank you for those comments. I think it's, you know, a team effort. I think it's an understatement to say, you know, one or two people, three people, four people have pulled this together. It's the volunteers at the food bank. It's the collaboration between local businesses, the marketplace, the meat market, Latieri's, Mia Moray, all of who have guaranteed food supply and security for our food bank and to feed our workers as well. So it's a well-oiled machine at this time. You know, I got to say, the people who are volunteering, the MRC, people from the schools. And just as an example, yesterday, we were able to pull quickly together and place a family in emergency housing. And it took us five hours to do that. And those people were displaced and living in their car just a day, a day and a half ago. So that's a really good team effort from the school side, from the town side, and from, you know, the support of all the administrators in town. We can't do it without the funding and the support and the go-ahead and the quick decision-making that's been happening. So I would like to thank everyone that, you know, makes us look good, is all the people behind us. Chief?
Thank you. And real quick, Mr. President, I'd like to add, you know, I've heard my name two or three times mentioned in the last 10 minutes. It's my firefighters and Action Ambulants, the private contractor that are interfacing with the public every day, not just on the COVID-19 problems that we're having. It's the everyday medical aides. They don't know what they're walking into. I've had 10 firefighters been sent out to be tested. Thank God, they all came back negative. But when many of us all went home, not willingly to ride this out, we canceled all vacations and personal time on the department. So for the firefighters on our job, there was no avoiding it. You got to come to work. You're going to do the calls. And I can't say enough about them. I can take their vows. I'm proud to represent them here tonight on WCAT and with the council. But again, the members of our department and Action Ambulants are out there every day. And I appreciate the work they do. Thank you again, chief. Does anybody have any questions for you, the two chiefs?
Just to thank them for their help. And we really appreciate it. And the town is in a better place because of them.
Absolutely. Okay, we're going to move on. This is public hearings, and we do not have any public hearings. And we will now be opening up for public comment. I see that we have 42 participants on this webcast. And I see that there are 15 people on the chat line. I believe, Larissa, those are the people waiting to speak on public comment?
We do have somebody waiting to speak. Let me see.
You're going to open them and run that through.
If you're waiting on the side, if you would just click the button to raise your hand again. I know somebody had their hand raised. Suzanne Swope, go ahead.
Hi. A question about, of those who are in isolation, do you have an age breakdown at all on those in isolation?
Yeah. Yeah, we do. I do track. I don't have the most recent. I usually do it by the week. But we do track the age breakdown every single day.
And can you share it or is that personal information?
No, 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 we can definitely share it. It's not, it's not personal information. We were just working on it this afternoon. So I don't have it that I can share on the screen right now.
I believe it is going to be...
Oh, but I think during the budget presentation, it's going to be part of that.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Meredith, just so we know, what were the, do you know the ages of the two people who passed away that we found out today?
Over the age of 75, both of them.
79 and 81 or something like that. Okay, is there anyone else online? I see 15, it says 15 people chat.
I don't see anybody with their hands up.
This is the opportunity to speak at public comment. If you'd like to speak, you know, raise your hand so she can see who you are. And if you don't want to speak, there's a Q and A button, a question and answer button. You can type a question and we will get you back an answer on that question. Is there any other public comment? Larissa, anything?
I don't see, I don't see anything. No hands are up and there is no Q and A.
Okay. Again, the website to come on to this is If you want to call from a phone, you can call 646-558-8656. And the webinar ID number is 936-67460758. See, we have 43 participants and 15 people are on the chat line, but no one is ready to ask a question. Is that correct? If not, we'll move on to correspondents. I did not receive any. Denise, did you receive any correspondents?
I didn't receive any, no.
Committee reports. Appointments Committee first.
Yeah, so we met regarding the employee evaluation forms. We made a slight change to the form that I put together, which Stephen was nice enough to put together for us. And those forms are ready to go out tomorrow.
Okay. And they're going to all four employees of the council. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep.
All right. Anybody have any questions on that report? Hearing none. Do we have a report from the Joint Committee? Peter?
Sorry about that.
Tracy?
Yes, so the Joint Committee is going to meet later this week to discuss what the public process is going to look like moving forward for the rezoning of the middle school site, especially given these times. We want to make sure that there are as many people that can contribute to the process as possible. So we're going to meet with VHB to, who are the contractors that are going to help us draft the middle school zoning ordinance to figure out what that process might look like given the nature of everything right now. And so we'll have something, at least scheduled, that we can work through with the community to figure out the best zoning for that, for that site.
So there will be a report of something on the next council meeting. And I understand MAPC is willing to come in and be able to do public meetings online. And in Zoom, they have the capacity to do that. And hopefully, once you guys meet with the new engineer that's doing the zoning, we can get that started. Okay, are there any other committee meetings?
Mr. President, yes, the Finance Commission met this past Thursday via Zoom. And we just continue to go over the analysis, I guess, of the beginnings of the fiscal '21 budget. We were very fortunate to have CFO Friedman there with us, again via Zoom, to give us the outline and the initial drafts of the budget. And she has been very helpful and has made it very clear to us that she's going to be there throughout the process to help us. We will be meeting again this Thursday and pretty much weekly. It's a very different time and a different budget year as I'm sure Town Manager Bazan, I'm sure Austin has gone through. Unlike any other in the past, it's, there's a lot of unknowns out there. And I know the town is doing the best they can with Town Manager and Anna. And I know we're going to be going through the details as we usually do. And we'll have updates as it progresses.
Thank you, Jim. Now, anything from either the SBAC or the Bill of Health?
SBAC hopes to have, I know, we hope to have a couple of motions from the SBAC. We have not set up a Zoom meeting as of yet. It will be a public meeting when it is set up. And it is hoped to be done early next week. And I think there will be some emergency motions possibly being made from the schools that we hopefully can deal with right away that might be able to help them in regards to next year for the middle and high schools. So I hope to have a report at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other committee reports? Okay.
President Boncorry.
Yes.
Just something to bring up is there's a Q and A section on the Zoom meeting that's down below. There was a resident that actually asked a question. So maybe if we can circle back around to that the next time we do public comment because it's in the question and answer section.
Yep.
Is there someone in there?
Yeah, we'll pull it up at public comment.
Yep.
Okay, let me see. No, it says no open questions.
It does under Q and A. It does have a...
Council President, I put it under the answered and I let that resident know that we're going to get a response to her or him as soon as we can.
Okay, so under answered, I see two?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Might as well do it right now because we're going to go into an hour-long presentation of the budget. So to this person, the question is, what is the town's involvement with the nursing home people on Sturgis Street? Because that person said he heard someone was tested positive today. I don't know that. Meredith, we have some communication going with the Sturgis Street Nursing Home?
Yep, so I've been in constant communication with them just as this ramped up because along with Park at Harborview, the elders, especially elders living in congregate settings, are primarily my biggest concern. So I have been in contact with Dr. Padula at least weekly. And then we've been talking a few times today. They were testing all of their residents today based off of a confirmed case. One, just, they've had one confirmed case there so far. Not expecting any other necessarily, but out of an abundance of caution, they went forward and tested everybody today. So we've been in constant contact with them, offering them support especially since we had a team that went and did it yesterday. But they had all their protocols in place and their next steps is needed.
Okay. Thank you for answering that question from, but I assume if they were tested today, we don't have any results, same as we don't have results for Park or the Albers yet.
Right.
All right. That's one more. Were there any other questions in the answers? Anybody else under there, Larissa?
No, sir. I do not see anything under Q and A and no hands are up.
All right. Austin, you are on. Town Managers Report.
Okay, so budget presentation time. Always fun. Honestly, this is going to be super different and it's probably going to be the most unique budget presentation that I do in my career, I would say. So first off, I want to thank the council for allowing me to have the time to present this budget to the council and the community and get this process moving. I know this is about a month late of when we originally intended on presenting. But, you know, circumstances have changed. And I appreciate the time the council is giving me. I also appreciate all the support of my department heads who, you know, they, this project, this process has changed in my time here. We changed it once last year with completely using like a web-based submission format. And then this year, we kind of came up with the next iteration. So we incorporated more goals, tried to have them seek out some metrics and things like that. Really pushing my department heads to think about the budget process a little bit differently. And I appreciate all the time that they give to this process. Most specifically, the time that they give to Anna Friedman, but then also the time that Anna Friedman gives back. She has been working too many hours over the past couple of months, in all honesty, to get this together. But we think we have something pretty cool for everyone today between our web-based budget, that's going to be interactive. We're going to have a nice book that's going to be printed up either Friday or Saturday or on Monday. But we really want people to dig into this online, interactive budget. We feel like it's the future of where budgeting is going. It allows everyone to touch the different parts of the budget that they're really interested in looking into. And we're trying to break it down from an intimidating 250, 300-page document into something that's a little bit easy to kind of poke around and understand kind of how the money moves around the government. Because ultimately, where the money moves is a prioritization of services that the town is looking for. So, you know, the staff has worked very hard on this. I appreciate the time of the council and especially all the work that Anna Friedman put into this. You know, this came up earlier, the impacts of COVID-19. Honestly, they can't be understated at this point. A little over a month ago, I had the unenviable position of choosing to close town buildings to the public. Then we, Lisa, made the decision to close the schools. The governor made the decision to close the schools. Then this is extended into early May. Today, we hear about the schools being closed through the rest of the academic year. It's been a trying time. And that's not just for me and my office. It's for everyone who works for the town and everyone who's trying to really support the town, let alone everyone who... everyone who lives in the town who has been asked to physically stay at home for over a month at this point. We're working very hard to provide some level of service in this time. I believe we're providing a very high level of service through what's happening in the EOC, what our Public Works Department is working on, what our Finance Department is working on, but also all of the employees who aren't coming into work every day, most of them are working at home. We've set up new ways for them to utilize technology and be able to work from the comfort of their homes. And we've really had to pivot in the way we provide services to the community because of the impacts of this. It's it's in town. More and more people get it every day, unfortunately. We have some deaths in town. This is going to, this is going to be here for a while. So what we're doing, as much as possible, is relying on the real expertise that Meredith Hurley has been bringing to the table, like Phil brought up earlier, and some of the other counselors, along with the chiefs, putting in hard work. And more than the hours that I should ever reasonably ask employees to put in, what public safety is doing in responding during these times. You know, every, every day, I'm asking people to leave their homes to do their job. So it's something that really weighs heavily on me, that I am asking some people in this community to leave the comfort of their homes and their families and put themselves in potentially harm's way to provide services to the town. So I really celebrate everyone who has been showing up every day and putting in the work that has been necessary to support this town throughout this process, because without them, I don't know where Winthrop would be. So I give all of my appreciation to my staff and my employees, and really the community for stepping up to support one another during this time. We're going to get through it. It'll something, it's going to be something that we can all learn from in the future. But it's something that really has changed the way that we're doing some things. So with that, Larissa, could you have Mike, or could you take control and play the PSA that we did about COVID?
Hi, I'm Austin Faison, Town Manager of Winthrop.
I'm Terrance Stell, the Chief of Police.
Hello, my name is Paul Flannigan, Chief of the Winthrop Fire Department.
I'm Meredith Hurley, the Director of Public Health here in Winthrop.
I'm Lisa Howard, the Superintendent of the Winthrop Public Schools.
Hi, my name is Steve Callow, the Director of Public Works.
Together, we make up this community.
It's been a long few weeks dealing with the COVID-19 public health crisis.
And we still have several weeks ahead of us.
We need you to continue to do your part to keep your friends, neighbors, and first responders safe.
We promise to continue to do ours.
Your town government is still open and working for you. The Town Hall building is closed, but you can still reach us online. We're just a click or email away to answer your questions.
Our emergency operations center is open, and will stay open until this is over.
You can call us at 617-539-5848, Monday through Friday, if you have questions about COVID-19 or need help.
We also have a COVID-19 tip hotline on the public safety website.
Police firefighters and ambulance attendants will be there for you in an emergency.
Someone will always answer the phone when you call 911 or the police or fire station.
We train and prepare to do our jobs when things are at their hottest and the situation is the most challenging.
Although our school buildings are closed, our staff has continuously been working to ensure that our students have the opportunity to stay engaged in learning, virtually connect to their teachers and friends. We will strive to make sure that our students continue to have access to the supports they need and ensure that they are taking care of themselves, both socially and emotionally.
The committed people at the Department of Public Works are carrying out our mission each and every day. The work we do has a direct impact on all of our health and safety.
We are also working very closely with Inspeccional Services, checking both restaurants and businesses for compliance.
Chef Boyardee!
The hard-working volunteers at the food bank are now distributing food by delivery only. If you need food, you can call or email us. All of this information is on the town's website.
The food bank is still accepting non-perishable donations that can be dropped off at the front loop of the Cummings Elementary School, Monday through Thursday.
Right now, it is crucial that we continue to adhere to the recommendations from our public health officials.
Stay at least six feet away from others, and do not shake hands or hug. Wear a cloth mask when out in public. Wash your hands frequently and use hand sanitizer. And most importantly, if you're sick, stay home and call your healthcare provider.
I would like to thank all my officers, and we hope you'll join us in thanking the dedicated town employees who continue to work hard every day.
Please help protect them and yourselves by following public health guidelines and practicing social distancing.
We've come a long way already in dealing with this virus, but there's still a lot of work to be done.
With your cooperation, it's work we know we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with the updates that were given earlier, I don't want to dedicate as much time to this as we already have about COVID-19, but Meredith, if you could just go live again, give the community just a couple minutes on kind of the work that you've been doing since we've kind of been dealing with COVID-19 over the last month and a half.
You're on mute, Meredith.
Anyone mute her?
Yep.
There she is.
There we go. So over the last month and a half, as COVID-19 has kind of ramped up, we primarily, my role has been to do the disease investigations and the contact tracing, which is a pivotal tool that public health uses for geographical isolation and to decrease transmission. So what I do every day, myself and the two chiefs and some of their more senior staff, we run through the cases by address, only by address. We don't, we don't alert names on the cases, only I have access to names of confirmed cases. So we go through addresses, just to double-check if there had been any sort of emergency response. I follow up the cases that are still currently in the community, and also reach out to providers that, for the folks that are isolated in the hospital. And so that goes through a series of a few days, and just fielding a lot of questions. People have a lot of questions about this, because we're just learning so much so fast, and it's changing the picture almost on a daily basis. So trying to work with the Board of Health and the business community also, which has been amazing, in keeping everybody up to speed on what the latest guidance is, and if there's any, any threats that we're seeing, you know, increasing within town. I have to say that the community overall has been really supportive of the social distancing. I know it's a struggle on the nice days, we all get a little itchy to be inside, but that's what we've been, that's what we've been doing. And, you know, there's been an increased need, obviously, for the food bank, because as folks are diagnosed with COVID, they they go into a self-isolation period if they're here in the community, where that can lead up to some, some folks are seven days, some folks extend out to 14 days. And those that are in their household also have to quarantine at that point. So they're not able to go out into the community, they can't go to the food store. So we, we put them on our call list, working with the outreach team with the Winthrop Police Department to make contact almost on a daily basis with folks, to make sure that their needs are met, so that they can stay comfortably in their homes at the same time that they're going through the isolation and quarantine period. So it's kind of where, that's just what we're doing.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it. I know how many hours you've been spending in the EOC, and it's too many. Can you switch over the camera to the chiefs again? Hey, guys. Could you two just give a couple of updates about what the public safety departments have been working on these crazy times?
Sure, I'll begin, and then I'll turn it over to Paul, so he doesn't get too close to me. Want to keep our social distancing. So, you know, I mentioned some stuff at the beginning of the meeting, and, you know, I just want to stress that it's the backbone and the people behind us that make us the most successful, our offices and our volunteers, the support staff from your office, and the town council's support, the superintendent's support. And I think that's what makes us all so successful, from the business leaders stepping up to our town employees who have shown up for work every single day since this crisis. And, you know, I think we certainly need to recognize them at the end of this. We're used to, you know, these crises is going 24, 48 hours, not five, six weeks, and with no end in sight. So I, you know, I do think we're prohibiting them from using their vacation personal time, and we need to adjust that. We need to figure out how we're going to get those vacation times and personal times and slotted before the end of the, before our end of the fiscal year. So there's still work to be done to recognize our offices and firefighters and nurses and DPW workers, and everyone else that's been showing up and coming in, and our volunteers. But, you know, that's something that we should be thinking about, especially as we're starting to present our budgets, and how do we thank them in these historic times. Thank you.
Real quick, boss, we spoke to the council earlier, I think you might have been offline, but again, a thank you to my guys, but again, Meredith, you know, through a volunteer of the MRC, and I think you were notified of this, a woman in St. Louis, was it?
A resident here.
A resident here needed a blood draw to see if she was going to be a bone marrow transplant donor to her sister in St. Louis. We reached out to a nurse in the MRC, and under Director, the Health Director's supervision, they went to the house, they drew the blood, and off it went. You know, we have firefighters delivering medication. So again, everybody stepped up to the plate, we all get along, and it's, I've been very impressed. I've been here probably the longest, but it's been very impressive what went on here in the last, you know, short while. I hope it continues. Thanks.
Thanks, chief. I appreciate that. You as well, Terry, chief. And thank you, Meredith. So again, these department heads have been working really around the clock for a while now on this topic. You know, it's a public health emergency, and we're doing the best that we can, day by day. So with that, I want to kick off something a little different we did this year. Myself and Assistant Town Manager Anna Friedman worked together to pre-tape the budget presentation. We're going to walk through some of the policies and initiatives and some of the higher-level numbers. But again, what I said last year, and I'm going to kind of reiterate it a couple times today, for me, I'd love the community to take the time to interact with this document and look at the numbers, and try to read some of our goals and things like that before we hop into some questions. This is, we worked really hard this year to come up with a good list of priorities in a very limited budget. And at the same time, what we did was we actually, on the town side, ensured that there was no staff reduction. So that was really important for us to do. You know, that comes with other concessions that the current employees are making, whether it's their staffing needs that they have within their departments, their increases in compensation, things like that. We worked really hard to make sure that everyone's still on deck, and we can continue operating in the future. So there's a little bit of a struggle this year, but so where we're going to go from now is a little online presentation or a video-based presentation that Mike Cabral and WCATV were very nice to take care of for us. Then after this, we're going to transition into Assistant Town Manager Friedman giving a live demonstration of the interactive budget that we have online. So Mike Cabral, if you could take it from here and throw on the budget presentation. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Town Manager Austin Faison, and I wanted to thank you for joining us tonight to discuss the fiscal 21 budget. Joining me here is the town's Assistant Town Manager and CFO, Anna Friedman. Hi, Anna.
Hi, Austin.
Thank you for coming. We're going to chat through this budget. Little different this year, instead of being in front of an auditorium full of people, we're here together. So let's kind of knock out some of these things. So to begin with the highlights, we have a little under $1 million and a half dollars worth of growth between fiscal 20 and fiscal 21. Again, this money will primarily go towards fixed costs, the school department, and then it will be spread around town departments. And we have a multitude of goals that we're looking to achieve, both my office and the town council, along with our department heads. And we've decided to group those five policy areas, into five policy areas, excuse me. So those five policy areas are to professionalize town services, leverage technology, and maximize service delivery, elevate community and economic development, prioritize health, safety, and overall community well-being, and lastly, to ensure quality operational and financial management. Moving on, this year, we will have $66,406,262 in total revenue and expenditures, and that is a $1.47 million increase over fiscal 20 for all funds, which is a 2.26% increase. In addition, that is a 2.84% increase year-over-year to town revenues. Now, Anna, can you walk us through a little bit of why Winthrop has very little financial flexibility?
Sure, thank you. So I think it's important to consider when you're looking at the town's annual budget recommendation, how we spend those funds that come in. So this this slide here demonstrates that our allocated percent of new net new recurring revenue growth is primarily allocated to our school department and fixed costs, with 9% for our town department. So that's a demonstration of the priorities that the town has in supporting its school system, and the fact that we have obligations to our fixed costs. And so this means that we don't have much financial flexibility. So if we have to make adjustments in the budget, there are a few places for us to go in the budget, particularly due to the fact that the town sort of enacted a number of savings during the previous recession. And so this will be an area that we'll talk more about later in the presentation and during this budget process in general.
Anna, silly question here, but that 29% of fixed costs, is that with the town and the school?
Yep, that's for the town and the school, so that, those are costs associated with pension payments for the town and the school, other post-employment benefits, health insurance benefits, things like electricity. Some of that is also in that school department bucket there, so part of that school department, the blue shading that you'll see on the screen there, some of that, those costs there are also fixed costs. But the orange part, there are some costs that the town picked up from the school a couple of years ago as part of our budget.
Great. So in terms of revenues, when we look at the total general fund in fiscal 20, it was In fiscal 21, that's going to be $54,005,0134, which is a 2.74% change year-over-year with our enterprise funds. We went from $11,624,488 to $12,7,874, which is a 3.3% increase year-over-year. And then again, that changes our total operating revenue year-over-year by 2.84%. In terms of expenditures, we have spread the increases over the town departments, school departments, non-departmental, and enterprise funds. In the town departments, that's a 1.71% increase. In the school department is a 3.75% increase, and in enterprise funds, it is a 3. And in enterprise funds, it is a 3.3% increase. Also, non-departmental, that is a 0.35% increase. So we kind of spread the increases out across different cost factors. With property taxes, our maximum allowable levy in Fiscal 20 was $34,194,898. And in Fiscal 21, we are looking at $35,117,262. That is an increase of $922,364. Anna, can you just chat with me a little bit about that to explain this?
Yeah. So I think it's important to know that the property taxes are the town's largest source of revenue to support the essential services provided by the town. So that includes school department, police, fire, library, public works, et cetera. And so what this means is that for FY21, the new revenue that is coming into the town as a result of the Proposition 2 and 1/2 levy limit increase is only, when I say only, is $922,364. It's $364, as Austin said. And so that, when there are requests for increases as a result of ongoing fixed costs that are rising greater than that amount in various areas of our budget, that puts additional pressures on that amount of money that's coming in. And it's important to note that the, the town has some capacity in terms of if it were to ever entertain an override, and I know Austin may want to speak about this a little bit, but right now we are up against our levy limit. And so there is only about $7,000, which we can't even capture due to some rounding, just the way that taxes are calculated. Most communities have this. But our, so our levy ceiling right now, however, is all the way up to 67, over 67 million. And so we, the town actually has an override capacity of $37.6 million. So we have more in override capacity than we're actually bringing in in our allowable levy right now. So folks should just keep that in mind if that is ever to be a conversation, that the town has plenty of flexibility there to provide for an override.
Great, thanks. So just to kind of hit on this point a little bit harder, our revenue is limited by Proposition 2 and 1/2. And what is also going to happen this year and the next fiscal year is we are going to be significantly impacted by COVID-19. We've talked about different numbers that have been associated with this. But at the state level, it looks like over a two-year fiscal period, they could potentially be down around $6 billion, when that is a, Anna, $44 billion budget?
Yeah, it's around a $44 billion budget. So between like 10% to 15% of their revenues could be lost.
Sure. So when you look at those revenues being reduced, one of the first places that they look is state aid, or local aid, excuse me with that. And we are really budgeting to the penny of what the local aid that we're depending on from the state. So if that remains flat or is reduced by any measure, we're not going to be able to do the things in town that we have already tried to budget for in terms of level service. This will potentially result in reductions in staffing or reductions in service levels. We have worked very hard with this Fiscal 21 budget to maintain the same staffing levels that we went into this fiscal year with. And luckily, we've been able to do that. However, throughout this process, when the Finance Commission and the town council is meeting about this budget, their priorities may be a little bit different than the budget that we presented. And with that, we have, again, limited financial flexibility in trying to pursue some different ideas that people may have in the community. So with those ideas, it's not that they're bad ideas, it's that we need to figure out how to pay for them. And with the limitations that we have, we will be looking at really bumping up against making hard choices between what we want to provide this community and what the government is looking, or is expected to provide to this community. So COVID will impact that a lot and we will be working through this for the foreseeable future. But again, we are quite limited by Proposition 2 and 1/2. And the community, if we are looking to provide some services or increase services, we need to look at potential funding sources that are sustainable over a long period of time to be able to pay for these types of things. So just wanted to make sure that we were clear about what kind of we're looking at our revenue like.
So I'm going to walk us through in more detail the expenditures that are proposed in the Town Manager's FY21 Budget Proposal. And so we're going to look through those in some more detail. And additionally, so that folks know, at the end of this presentation, I'm going to walk everyone through how they can access this information on the town's website. We have a new, exciting transparency portal that will provide all of this information online and at your fingertips. So, and will also provide you with a web, an email address. So if you have questions, you can email and we will get back to you with more detail on all the contents of the budget that you may be interested to learn more about that we're not covering right now. So I'm going to dive right into our next slide, which is a focus on the town's, the FY21 expenditures. So both town and school departments have requested additional funds over and above what the new ongoing revenue can support. So as background on this, so with ongoing revenue growth of around 1.4 million and fixed costs requiring an increase of around $367,000, these additional requests from the town departments could not be accommodated in the FY2021 budget. So any increases for town departments reflected in the FY2021 budget are for contractual salary increases or adjusting appropriations to meet actual expenditure levels where previous budgets have not been properly aligned. In fact, many departments will actually see slight overall decreases as a result of consolidating some shared services such as maintenance in order to generate as much efficiency as possible. Additionally, the Winthropaz Public Schools has requested a needs-based budget for FY2021 of $23.9 million, which is about $2.6 million, $2.6 million over the FY2020 budget allocated to the schools. So the Town Manager's FY21 Budget will be allocating an increase of $800,000, which is all that available resources can currently afford. And this increase of $800,000 represents 64% of all new unrestricted ongoing revenue projected for FY21. And it's important to know that nearly 81% of the school's total budget is dedicated to employee salaries. Additionally, as you can see on this chart, and the town and the school departments that I was just speaking of are our general fund departments, our enterprise funds, which is our water sewer, our harbor master, ferry, rink, and parks and recreation department. They are seeing an increase of 3.3%. Now, this spending and the associated revenue to support that is generated from user fees as a primarily source of revenue. And so overall, as Austin mentioned earlier, it's total increase in expenditures of 2.26%. And if you notice, that's below what we, the 2 and 1/2% that is provided under Proposition 2 and 1/2. And that's because some of our other sources of revenue are below what we would be bringing in if everything was 2 and 1/2% or above. For example, state aid, which we'll talk about. So our next slide is a, is a further discussion on fixed costs that we briefly spoke about earlier. I had listed some of these. So these are debt service, energy costs, health insurance, other insurance premiums, our waste management contract to pick up, to pick up trash, pension costs, snow and ice removal, and assessments that were charged from the state that we have no control over. So as we had mentioned, this, these changes will add $367,985 to the budget for next year. We've tried really hard to mitigate any increases in these fixed costs wherever possible. For example, we're working to obtain some savings in energy through our solar credit program. We're working to figure out different ways to mitigate risk exposure, to hopefully help with our insurance premium costs. But that's an issue that we're still working on. And our waste management, which Austin will talk about later, we've worked to maintain that at a steady state for FY21 as well. And then, so to give folks a sense of sort of the piece of the pie, the share of the pie that each of our town departments shares, you can see that education is a main, is, is the largest sort of single department at 22, about 34.6% of the general fund budget. Some of those costs actually are also for the tuition that the town pays for vocational schools. And then sort of the next biggest sort of piece of the pie is our public works department and our employee benefits, our public safety department, and then the others are a bit smaller. But you'll notice that debt service is a meaningful piece as well at 6.3%. So this just further underscores the fact that we don't have a lot of flexibility as a lot of our budget is personnel, in fact, and these other fixed costs that we've mentioned. So this next slide gives you another perspective on this. It holds constant, it's a percentage slide. It holds constant the total amount of money budgeted annually. And it shows you of that money budgeted, sort of these large categories of personnel, purchase services, supplies, and capital. And as you can see, personnel and most of the, the education, which is the lighter purple underneath that, 81% of that is personnel as well. So the largest chunk of our spending goes to support personnel that deliver services to the community and a smaller portion go to the supplies and other expenditures that also go into that programming. And then additionally, there are capital costs associated with maintaining the town's infrastructure that make up a portion as well.
You know, with the budget, we kind of get stuck in talking through things using some jargon and we use some charts and graphs that, with the way that we're presenting it now in the web-based platform, we hope that it gives you a real interesting way to interact with it. That said, I wanted to use something that I kind of use with my children sometimes. These actually have come from the Wojcik household. Thank you to Cody especially for helping us out with this. But, and Jake, excuse me. What I'm going to do is I'm going to visualize how our budget looks and how our change over, year-over-year revenues have changed and how we can spend. And I'm going to use some trusty Legos to visualize this with me. So stick with me. Let me walk you through a couple of these things. All right. So this budget right here, this beautiful looking budget, is how our money is actually distributed amongst a couple of different revenue streams. And these represent the departmental expenditures that we're making. In order, education takes up 22 of those blocks, each block representing a million dollars. The two blocks down here, the black, those are shared expenses. Public Works is up here in the yellow with 1.3 million. So I gave them like a block and a half. Debt is four, right here in the brown. Then we have benefits that are the blue right here, 11, $11 million goes to benefits. Then we have general government, which is right over here, the red blocks for 3 million. And then down here in the gray is public safety. So just to give you a little visualization of how our budget looks, this is how $65,000, $66 million gets spent and how it gets spread out across different departments. So although we want to look and say there's one department here or there where we could cut from, it's very hard when you look at it this way that we have significantly reduced and limited funding available. And then when you look at it as a visualization this way, we have about this many blocks to add to it. One there and one here. That's our $1.5 million that we're adding on year over year. So a small amount of money. Now, I'm going to take you to another visualization. So another visualization that we have here, up in this corner. There we go. So this is a quick visualization of how our revenue looks year over year by $100,000. So the way that is distributed is over three cost centers. One being the schools, which is represented by eight blocks for $800,000. The fixed costs are four blocks, which is right here in the blue, represented by $400,000. And then the town has one block, which is the red block. So that is what we are using this funding for year over year by, in chunks of $100,000. So you can see that fair amount goes to the schools, then we have another fair amount going to the fixed costs, and then a small amount going to the municipal government. That said, this is not to make it a town versus school discussion. We are just trying to show how much we prioritize our schools in town and how much of new growth year over year is dedicated specifically to schools. Okay, last diagram for us to look at. Now, this last chart that I built right here, Legos each represent a million dollars. So with the school side is in the yellow and the orange. That's $22 million. In the middle is our fixed costs. So those are things like benefits, health insurance, pension, those types of things, insurance. That is $18 million. So that's 18 blocks. Lastly, right here is the town part, which is represented by black. And that is 15 blocks. So that's $15 million. So again, just a quick visualization of where we really stand. And I wanted to show you, instead of just looking at bar charts and pie charts and things like that, really a physical way of how we can utilize this budget and how we can think about this budget. Because these are essentially real dollars. And when we're making decisions between departments, we are literally changing how these blocks are put together. So you can use these blocks to put together all different types of programs in the community. But what we're trying to do is spread them out as equitable as possible. And we're trying to provide the highest level of services that we can with the funding that we have allocated. Right now, as you can see right here, we have a town in school split. And then we also have the fixed costs that fit in the middle. And like Anna Friedman spoke about earlier, the fixed costs support both the town and the schools. So I hope you understood a little bit better how, with some visualization and a different kind of tool, you can see through the budget a little bit different way. So thanks for your time.
So in speaking about the school, recognizing that they requested a needs-based budget in it, above what we have been able to provide for in the Town Manager's Budget Proposal, this is a little bit, this provides you with some additional detail on this slide to show you the growth of 3.75% going from $21.3 million to $22.1 million. And then for the additional types of expenditures across the other town departments, sort of taking the school out of the equation, just to see what the rest of the town spending looks like, you can see that it's primarily public works, employee benefits, public safety. And so that will, that explains sort of how the rest of the town department's expenditures are designated in the FY2021 budget. So talking a little bit more about revenue, and Austin framed this out in saying that we have to be very mindful of what's going on in the larger financial situation in response to the COVID-19 crisis. We have both a public health crisis that requires investments to respond to, but also we have a revenue and financial crisis with folks out of work, unable to pay their bills. Obviously, public service is based off of payments from, from members of the community and from the state. And so should those, that ability to pay be impacted by the current COVID-19 crisis, that then would impact our revenues, as Austin stated. The FY2021 budget right now does not fully take into account the potential impact of the COVID-19 crisis. And this is something that we'll be working collaboratively during this budget process as projections are ongoing to update as needed. There are some adjustments that we made in light of the current public health crisis. For example, we have eliminated any increases to our meals and rooms excise taxes in light of the social distancing measures. We expect that there won't not be a lot of revenue coming in the rest of FY20 for that, nor for, potentially for FY21. We have to make sure that our revenues are conservative and we have typically budgeted conservatively for revenue so that when, when projections or when actuals dip, we try to ensure that that does not dip below what we've budgeted. So we will continue to monitor the projections for revenue for FY2021, but we may need to make further adjustments to this as we move forward during the spring, as it becomes clearer how long the crisis may last and what aid may be available to us from the state and/or the federal government, which will be really important. So as you can see from this revenue chart, property taxes are by far the larger source of revenue for the town, 64, almost 65%. State aid is the other largest share at 22.3%. And that will be one of our major watch areas because if the state cannot, if the state has to make budget cuts, as Austin said, that could impact that state aid number. And we would need to manage around that, should that number be reduced. Additionally, another major source of revenue for us is our Additionally, another major source of revenue for us is our pilot payments from the MWRA in Massport, for which we have a new agreement. And that will be going up from Massport at $150,000 for FY 2021. And then fees, licenses and permits and other smaller fines make up most of the remainder there. Those are also issues, areas where we may have, we may be closely watching for FY 2021 as we certainly want to be, do what we can to support the community and our neighbors in a time where folks may be not at the financial level that they were previously. And so that maybe, those may be areas where revenues may be down a little bit due to us potentially extending or working with people to make their payments. And then this next slide just gives folks a little bit more of a, of a further perspective on our state aid and our net state aid. So what this is demonstrating is that we receive funding from the state, both education funding and unrestricted government aid, but we also have to pay charges back to the state for things like charter school tuition, special education and school choice sending tuition. So what this is showing is that over time, the comparison and the net benefit that the community gets from the state. And so the box at the, the, the blue at the top is the receipts and the charges at the bottom, those are the charges that we are, that's what we're sending out. And so that, the orange line is the actual amount of sort of net benefits that the community is receiving from the state. And as you can see, it's pretty, been pretty flat the past two budgets. The state did implement some recent education reform. And so I think we saw some of that benefit going from FY 18 into FY 19. But since that bill has been finalized, we will not have a large increase in aid to assist with our education expenditures. We're currently planned to receive only an increase of 59,000. And like I said, that could, that could actually change. That's probably a best case scenario in light of the economic situation. And so this is another issue that shows that we, we are sort of constrained in our resources to be able to make adjustments in light of somewhat flat aid from the state at this point. And then moving on from the general fund to our enterprise funds. So these are separate entities from our general fund. These property taxes and state aid do not support these funds. So these funds are intended to be self-sufficient and generate revenues to support their operations through user, user charges and other means. So for FY 2021, the Harbor Master is seeing a small increase of 1.98% for a total budget of around 362,000 with no major changes in their budget anticipated. The ferry is level funded at 460,000 for FY 2021 and it does not assume any subsidy from the general fund at this time. So the town would not be providing any revenues to support the ferry's operations. The ferry currently receives funding from the state and also from a municipal agreement with another municipality. So the recreation fund is also seeing a small increase in one point, around one and a half percent for a total budget of 342,956 in FY 2021. Similar to last year in FY 2020 or the current year, we've had to focus programming on items that help to, that bring in sufficient revenues to support the operations of the department. And so that approach will continue in FY 20, in FY 20, in FY 2021. I apologize, I apologize. And the rink is seeing a very small increase of less than 1% to a total budget of 323,466 in FY 2021. Now these will also be, the ferry, the Parks and Recreation and the Rink are also areas for us to be thoughtful about for FY 2021. If social distancing measures continue onward into next year, we will need to be, we will need to make sure that we are strategically managing these funds since their sort of budgets and operations and their programming may need to be responsive to those social distancing measures. So mentioning that just in case we need to have further conversations about that with the community, depending on how long the social distancing measures are in place. And then another water, one other enterprise fund is our water and sewer fund, of course. And for FY 2021, the budget proposes 10,519,116 dollars in funding for the water sewer enterprise fund. And this is an increase of 3.78% over the FY 2020 budget or around 383,000 dollars. So this increase supports new debt service for state mandated projects such as lead line replacement projects, as well as increases to the town's water and sewer assessments to the MWRA, the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority. So the assessments that we pay to the MWRA are the largest portion of the water and sewer fund budget. These increases are currently projected to require an increase in the current water sewer rate, which is currently 22.9 dollars per 100 cubic feet. However, we are constantly updating our projections on this to see if there's any way for us to potentially mitigate any increases. And we're finalizing those projections based on our latest billing, collections information and other information from other stakeholders involved. So this, these funds will continue to support our ongoing infrastructure project at the Center Business District and also help us do planning for longer-term infrastructure projects such as Morton Street and Ingleside Water Storage and thinking about that. And the, this next slide just provides some history on our assessments that the town pays to the MWRA and to see how that has changed over time. So there are slightly different calculations for water and sewer, which are detailed in our budget document, which will be online for those that would like to know more about this. And as you can see, sort of the sewer and the, the water assessments are increasing around similar trajectories for FY 2021. And it's also important to note that these are preliminary assessments for 21. This could change. The MWRA typically finalizes their assessments later in the spring. So we're waiting for additional information from them on if those will be changing. And now I'm going to kick it back over to Austin, who's going to talk more about some of the challenges and however, and also the initiatives that the town is working on for FY 2021.
Hi. So the next item we're going to tap into is the different goal categories that we have internally. So we decided on some different focus groups of goals because we don't just want to have a disparate set of goals. We want to try to put them into a few groups so that we can know what our progress is in terms of some of these target focus groups. So the first item is professionalizing town services, which has been something I've been striving to do since I've been in Winthrop. Right now, what we're focusing on in the next fiscal year is the energy and climate-related reorganization. So this is something I've been talking about since I've been here is the regionalization of services. We have a good opportunity here to work with our neighbors Chelsea and Revere to combine our funds to have an office that is also supported by the Bar Foundation financially. And it will allow us to have full-time positions for a climate agent, a conservation agent and an energy administrator at the least. So with the small investment that we had put towards a conservation agent position previously and a grants office, a grants manager, we can utilize that funding and have multiple full-time employees that are able to be utilized by the town for different meetings or inspections and those types of things. They will help us with grant funding and they will also help us in the future, make sure that we have all of the ability to apply for things like green communities grants and different climate-related activities. So we're excited for that. And that office will eventually be co-located in Chelsea. And that's something that we are currently working on and should be up and running in fiscal 21. Next up is the solid waste study. I discussed this last year about diversifying the waste stream. And in the fall, I appointed a managers committee that was the Winthrop Zero Waste Committee. And they worked pretty hard for a few months and they put together a great report for my office. And they're actually going to present that at the next council meeting, some of their findings. I don't want to steal their thunder, but they did have some recommendations for fiscal 21. First off, we're going to look to secure a one-year extension with capital waste so that we're able to transition to our new program. And that will include some different bins and the likes. We will have a zero-waste waste reduction public campaign in Winthrop, both in the town and in our schools. We feel like there's a real opportunity to have our young people in town learn how to interact with waste differently. I know when I was young, those blue bins were just something I associated with things like soda cans and paper. And now we have another generation coming up and they will be taking out things like compost and textiles. So just a different way of dealing with our solid waste in a whole effort to try to reduce the amount of solid waste that we are putting into the different trucks that come through our town. We're going to participate in state and federal different programs and fundraising, fund opportunities for solid waste. We are going to find a company that can manage the town's compost pile. We've had multiple expressed interests, so we're excited about that opportunity. We're going to participate in a textile recycling program. And then we're going to initiate some periodic waste-specific events. So different ways that we can maybe help pick up different items or make it a little bit easier on the community to get rid of some of their bigger ticket items. Additionally, in professionalization of town services, we're looking at our risk management. And we have had a real issue over time concerning our liability. We're looking to reduce our overall liability and we're going to try to reduce that through enhanced training and a preventative maintenance strategy, which is one of the items that our CFO, Anna Friedman, our assistant town manager as well, and our public works director, Steve Calle, have been working on concerning the maintenance of our buildings and our vehicles. Also, we are producing out of the human resources office, office with Stacy Calla, internal policies and procedures that are being introduced to staff. So we are training staff on these policies and procedures. We're having them sign off on them. We are holding them accountable to them. And we are trying as hard as possible to help this community realize that we are a professional government. We are working very hard to fulfill the modern workplace standards that you would see in any private or public entity. And to show the community that we're committed to that, we are constantly looking at different ways so we can reduce, to reduce our risk. And that will eventually lead to lower insurance premiums and things like that. But we have paid too much insurance in the last few years due to a multitude of different things. So we are looking as hard as possible to see how we can reduce our overall risk, which will then in turn reduce our insurance costs. Next up, and one of the broader goals is to leverage technology and maximize service delivery. So I talked about this last year pretty frequently and we are trying to offer municipal services outside of the traditional hours of town hall. Winthrop is unique. Winthrop has town, a town hall that's open Monday through Thursday, not Monday through Friday. We also have public safety and public works that are working more than just the four-day work week. And we have, we fall short in our office hours for certain things. So what we're trying to do is find web-based platforms that allow us to conduct this business outside of traditional business hours. So for you at home, you can apply for a permit or things like that at the comfort of your own home rather than having to come into an office. This hits home right now specifically with all the things that we're doing with COVID-19. The modernization of our service delivery has been put upon us. We have had so many requests come in from the community about a multitude of topics. And the only reasons we've been able to answer those is because we have been organizing these requests and delegating them appropriately. And we're using modern technology to do that. We're constantly taking the temperature of social media using Zen City. We're taking in public records requests through Next Request. We created this budget and you'll see a great interactive live demo with it later on in this presentation using Open Gov. And we're exploring increased opportunities with Open Gov as well. Ultimately, we have been presented right now with an opportunity to change how we do our jobs. Many have come into town hall and wanted to kind of see butts in seats. And now we're showing that because of pandemic, pandemic and a public health crisis, that we can actually get the work done without the traditional butts in seats, in offices. So in a short amount of time, we introduced Zoom. We're having this meeting over Zoom. We're also using Microsoft Teams in my internal groups. We are using remote working desktops for a fair amount of our employees. So we're really figuring out how to do this job in a different way because of what this time has put upon us. But still, we're kind of learning from this and seeing if we can change the status quo a little bit. So pretty exciting things from my perspective. In addition, the next goal category or goal focus group is to elevate community and economic opportunity. So that speaks to a planning department. And it's very clear to me that this community has a desire for a planning department. And it's gone unfunded previous, in previous budget discussions. It was previously on the ballot in, from what I can see, more than one override. And there's been this clear desire to have professional planning perspectives on some bigger kind of knotty town issues. So what I've been doing is working with some graduate students from Tufts and they are doing what's called their UEP program. So it's their kind of final project. And they've been focused on doing a study about a planning department in Winthrop. This has been really eye-opening for me because they talk about kind of the history of planning departments and where city planning came from, planned states like Rhode Island compared to unplanned states like Massachusetts. But it really reminds me of how little I know about planning. And I think it's something that I would very much so like to have a department head-level individual working in town on this topic. They could help with some of these public discussions that we've been having concerning zoning and the middle school site and things like that. But they can also help us be a more successful community. So I am very committed in this next fiscal year to, I've kind of removed the assistant town administrator from my internal staff. I've assigned those responsibilities to Anna Friedman. And that was intended to open up funding for someone that would be in charge of a planning department. So I look forward to having these students come and present to the town council and the finance commission. This is something that I think is very important to the community and it's important to me as well. So I look forward to having some form of planning department opened up in fiscal 21. Next up, in the same goal focus group of elevating community and economic opportunity, we're looking at the middle school site. So VHB, which I brought on with some salary savings, will begin working with the joint subcommittee of the town council this month. And if I'm right, they're actually meeting this Thursday, April 23rd. There will be virtual and eventually physical community meetings and they'll coordinate as many viewpoints as possible. And that's what's really important to me about this. I want a community process. I don't want to continue to hear feedback that the town doesn't do enough to incorporate the various viewpoints of the community and the citizens themselves. So we want as many people to participate in this as possible. I'm very excited about it because I know there is, just like the planning department, a lot of appetite for something to happen at the middle school site. So with VHB working with the joint subcommittee, they will eventually present language to the full town council. That language will then be pushed to the planning board and the planning board will go through a normal rezoning type of hearing. Ultimately, their proposed language will go to the town council to be voted on in terms of the general bylaws. So I'm very excited to get moving on this and I think that we have a real opportunity to get some good zoning done to that site and eventually have some type of project happening there that is in tune with what the community wants. The next goal focus group is to prioritize health, safety and overall community well-being. And this is one of those goals that I think kind of fits in this focus group and the previous focus group, but that's for WIN 2030. So that's our visioning document that we're working on with MAPC, that Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And this will happen over the summer of 2020. MAPC has been reviewing all of our planners, planning, previous planning documents, excuse me, and they have been summarizing a lot of the community input on those documents. They have been in contact with the advisory committee, the town managers advisory committee for WIN 2030. And there will be some, again, virtual and in-person community meetings. I love community meetings when they happen when it's for a group of people coming together to kind of come to some type of consensus and have these good public discussions. Because of the reality of the current situation with COVID-19, we may have to replicate some of these meetings virtually. We are working as hard as possible to utilize all technology available so that people have a chance to interact with this. And just in case people feel like they don't have an opportunity, the opportunity is not lost if you can't participate live in a meeting. What we really want to try to do is have people be able to voice their opinion, whether it's during the meeting, if they want to call into my office or the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, if they want to email my office, get in touch with your town counselor. The discussions do not stop in these meetings. I know that very well. So what I want everyone to feel comfortable with is reaching back out to us. If you didn't have the opportunity to go to that meeting, If you didn't have the opportunity to go to that meeting or you couldn't do the Zoom interaction with the online meeting, that's fine. You can participate in a different way. And we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to participate. WIN 2030 is going to be a great document that can set out a plan for the next 10 years in town until 2030. And I really look forward to having that document give us a loose template of what eventually will be a master planning process that a town planner would be working on with the community. Lastly, we are looking in a goal focus group at ensuring quality, operational, and financial management. A real priority of my office. I have the utmost respect for all individuals that go through this process and try to work through budgets and report back to this community. However, I have a level of professionalism that I hold myself to and my staff. And we are consistently incorporating new policies, new guardrails to make sure that we ensure that our jobs are being done correctly. So first, we have some fiscal policies that we have received from the Division of Local Services of the state, which is part of the Department of Revenue. What we're looking at for those is to begin sustaining a consistent level of service and value for residents and businesses, safeguarding financial integrity and minimizing risk through a system of internal controls, ensuring the quality and maintenance of capital assets, conforming to general law, uniform professional standards, and municipal best practices, protecting and enhancing the town's credit rating, promoting transparency and public disclosure, and assuring accurate and timely reporting. These are all incredibly important policies for me to have in place. And I look forward to future generations that work for this town utilizing these same policies so that the town is protected in its financial interest in the long term. There are additional goals that fall within this focus group of quality, operational, and financial management. And those are good government inefficiencies, the consolidation of expenses, building and vehicle maintenance, capital planning, union contracts, and storm water management, which will be a topic that we will be visiting during the water sewer presentation to the town council and the finance commission. Lastly, we have started significant initiatives during fiscal 20. The Center Business District Project started on April 6th. We have made progress in terms of the updating of our technology internally. We have new computers coming in. We're updating the Harvey Room with WCATV. We have fixed things around town. The Arthur T. Cummings School Playground, for example. And we are looking at some of the roofs in town and things like that in our coming fiscal capital plan, excuse me. Things started this year and we're going to continue working on them. Things like the planning department discussions, things like the study of a public safety building feasibility. We are working on things that aren't just contained to fiscal 20. Some of them will spill over to fiscal 21, construction and planning projects. Some of these projects within fiscal 21 that will begin in fiscal 21 will spill over into the future. That said, this budget itself and these policies and initiatives are focused on this fiscal year of fiscal 21. Hopefully, next year, we're able to reflect on these goals and the progress that we have made or where we're falling short and we'll be able to assess where we stand. So that's where we stand right now. And Anna is going to introduce some of the items in the capital plan to you. Thank you.
And now I'm going to speak a little bit about our capital improvement plan, which we're excited to announce is a much more robust plan than we have put forward in the past. And it only will demonstrate the projects that we have planned for FY21, but it will provide a five-year plan for projects that are on the horizon to demonstrate what priority projects are coming up and how we would propose to pay for those. That document is a flexible document that changes as priorities evolve, as funding opportunities evolve, and as things come on and off of the project year over year. But we hope that it will help inform the community about the needs for our capital improvements and how we propose providing for those. So this slide right here speaks just to the proposals that we have for FY21. And we're excited to announce a couple of new funding proposals that we think will help move the ball forward on a number of critical infrastructure issues that we have in town. So the first dedicated source of funding that we are focusing on to support our capital improvements is $150,000 in one-time funding to support a new roof for the library, a study for the Fort Banks access road that we know is a priority of the town council, and also a new water heater for the Gorman Fort Banks School. So this funding, we suggest transferring from the town's capital stabilization fund. That fund is funded by money that if the town's budget closes in surplus at the end of the year, those funds contribute to our free cash calculation and from a policy that the council put in place a few years ago, which is very a fiscally prudent policy, funds from that free cash are deposited into our stabilization funds. And so one of our stabilization funds is a capital improvement fund. And so we suggest rather than approaching the council ad hoc during the year for transfers for individual projects that we'd like to, as part of this annual budget process, suggest a transfer to support the projects that we are listing to be supported from that $150,000. Separately, there is a separate bucket of $150,000 that the town manager has previously set as being designated from our new Massport pilot year-over-year increases. And so that $150,000 is currently planned in FY21 to support multiple town building repairs and infrastructure improvements, sidewalk repair, and a new police cruiser that we replace each year. Separate from that, we have undertaken a new approach to our preventative maintenance to make sure that we're maintaining our buildings as best as possible and to provide support for our building maintenance department to do that. So we mentioned earlier that we consolidated some ongoing maintenance funds. But this also, this $50,000 is in addition to that for one-time priority projects that are bigger than just the day-to-day maintenance. So we've prioritized projects for our police, fire, library, and school buildings out of this funding. And these projects are all focused on improving safety and reducing risk for the town. And we propose utilizing the $50,000 from our building maintenance stabilization fund, which is a similar fund to the one I just described for capital. And so it's the same approach here to ask upfront for those transfers so that we can plan for that during the year and implement that as soon as the fiscal year kicks off. And now I'm going to kick it back to Austin, who will go into some more details about other priority areas for the town.
Lastly, I want to talk about the next steps in the budget process. We're going to have the town council and finance committee work together this year. They're going to have joint meetings over the month of May where they're going to meet with department heads and they're going to go through all of the topics that were hit on last year in separate meetings in joint meetings this year. The finance commission will present a recommended financial plan to the town council by May 30th. And after that, the town council will debate the topic of the budget and review the recommendations of the finance committee. And they will approve a final budget within the month of June. We're still committed to that even though we have had all these different impacts of COVID-19. Because we have a balanced budget today and what we were presented, we think we have a good opportunity to have the public discussions necessary to get this budget voted on. If you want more information about the budget, I invite you to look at the town website. It's www.town.winthrop MA.us. On that website, you will have access to our OpenGov budget platform. Anna Friedman is going to give us a live demonstration, once I finish up right here, of what that website looks like. But what I want you to do at home is please interact with this website. Instead of us using a book like this, a thick book that has lots of words in it and you kind of got to flip around a little bit, you can do this on your computer. And on your computer, what you can do is you can interact with the budget and you can click through. There's a department that's really important to you. You can click through and see some of their goals. And you can see what they've spent their money on and what they're looking to spend money on in the next year. This is really important to me because this is the future of budgeting. No longer will we be constrained to a physical document that is static and printed one time. We're going to be able to use these dynamic web based platforms to add an additional level of transparency and allow the community to look at the budget and interact with it. I want you at home to sit for a few minutes and play with this. From this presentation that we've made today, we're going to take some questions. But you haven't had time to really learn about this budget. And you haven't had the time to understand where the town council and my priorities lie. So I would really like you to take the opportunity to click through, look at some of the goals and objectives of different departments, read through the budget message, look through the goals of the town council, and really become accustomed to some of the goals and priorities that we have for the next year. In addition, we're going to have some physical copies, but we're only going to print out a few of them. And if you would like one, please request one from my office. You can email townmanager@town.winthrop MA.us and we'll receive that request and kind of deal with them on a case-by-case basis. That recommended financial plan from the finance commission or finance committee will be available on the town website on June 1st. And once the town council approves a financial plan for the coming fiscal year, we'll update all of the documents accordingly online. So you'll be able to tell what was my proposed budget, what the town council ultimately approved, and what that looks like year over year in comparison. So really cool way for us to interact with this budget. I really look forward to doing this in the future. I talked about last year, this is an iterative process. And every year, we're going to make this budget a little bit better. So thanks for spending the time watching this budget presentation. Next up, we're going to push it over to Anna Friedman, who's going to give a live demonstration. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me?
Hey, yes.
Great, perfect, okay. I'm going to take control of this screen briefly and walk everybody through how you can access our new interactive budget online. So bear with me one moment. Okay. Hopefully, folks are seeing the town's website up on their screens right now. So if you are interested in interacting with the FY21 Town Manager's Budget, you'll go to the website and you'll click on Budget. And then you'll click on the FY2021 Proposed Budget, which is right here. And it's going to take you to a landing page, which is the table of content for the budget document. So this is laid out consistent with the budget that the town manager put out last year. We're updating it with additional content this year. And so depending on what you're interested in, you can click through each thing and read it. Or if you just want to look at certain pieces of the budget, you can click there. So as an example of what we're talking about when we say interactive, I'm going to click on our general budget fund overview, a general fund budget overview, and show you how you can learn more about the budget. So you'll notice that many of the tables in the budget this year allow you to hover over them and the information changes in its slides. There are some tables that are not live in this way, but you'll be able to tell if it's linked to something that you can interact with if, when you hover over it, it changes. So for example, this is a general fund expenses by department, so it shows up all the categories. And so if we want to learn more, say we want to learn more about these categories, we can just click in this chart. And it's going to open up this new transparency portal that we have. And so the way to interact with this is you'll notice over here, there are different views that you can look at to see reports that are already set up. The majority of these here on the left side of the panel are reports that are in the budget. And so if you just want to click through this, if you're not someone that wants to read through all of the content and you're a visual learner, this is a great place to go for that, clicking through all the various departments. Basically, it's taking the information in the budget, which is normally in line item table form, and allowing you to manipulate it and look at it from different views to pivot it depending on what you're interested to learn more about. So while you're in here, I'll focus on the middle of the screen for a second. You can still click further into each of these departments. And so say we want to know more about what makes up each of these categories. So we can expand the chart and we can see high level expenditure totals for FY21 by department here. And you can scroll down and see all of those. If you want to just focus on one, so say we want to know public works. So if I click on public works over here, it will take me just to the departments that comprise the category of public works for the town. And if you want to know more about the TPW Highway Department, you click in there and it will show you the high level budget there. So there are different views. And so this is, like for example, if we were to click, I'll just pick, we can pick my department, for example. It will show you over time changes in department budgets. And again, you can click on any of these to go deeper, to sort of see how those have changed over time. And the numbers are right here below. Additionally, one other quick thing to show folks is that you can make your own, you can make your own table. So if you want to, if you hit reset, it will go back to the original table that you clicked into. But if you go to filters over here, let me just click back. There we go. I'm trying to get all the way out to the top. So if you want to make your own table, you can do that too. So say you want to look at revenue, you can click revenues. And you want to know revenue type, you can click revenue type. And it will show you property taxes stated, et cetera. So there are all these filters that you can explore. If you want to know enterprise fund revenues instead of general funds, you can switch and click that. And then it will bring up the enterprise fund revenues. And then you can expand those and you can go down deeper to see what each of those are. So we hope that this is something that will be helpful and interesting to everybody. And additionally, this is a new tool. So if you run into any technical issues or something doesn't make sense, there's an email that we've set up if you have questions about the budget. So please feel free to reach out to us at that email and we will resolve your question on that. So I'm going to stop sharing and kick this back to the town council.
Thank you. Is that the end of the report, Town Manager's Report? We got a couple more things, just briefly. Thank you, Anna. Thank you, Michael Ball as well. He edited that video. I hope I didn't put everyone to sleep with it. I can watch myself talk for hours if I was given the opportunity.
Austin, we dropped down from 43 to 29 people.
There we go. I mean, I'm doing my job then. Okay, Steve Calla, I saw you waiting there. I'm sorry I didn't hit this before the budget presentation. Can you give like a quick two-minute update on where we stand with the CBD projects right now?
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
So the project kicked off, as Austin spoke to earlier, on April 6th. We've been moving at a pretty good pace. Everything's right on schedule. All of you, at this point, have seen the demolition of French Square is complete. The temporary parking lot is also complete now. We've installed the nine isolation valves without any interruption of water. We have fully installed the temporary bypass system, which will be the temporary water main while the project is ongoing. That is currently being disinfected. The sampling should occur this Friday, we hope. And we'll get the results on Monday or Tuesday of next week, which will allow us to put that system online. And we'll be able to use it as needed as the phases progress. This week, we are actually going to be starting Phase 2. So everything that I just described made up Phase 1 of the project. We are now into Phase 2, which will be the sewer, water, and drain upgrades on Pauline Street between Walden and Woodside Avenue. And then we'll extend down Woodside Avenue to the area of French Square. And that'll be, that'll be over the next probably month and a half, you'll see that work occurring. Again, the project is on schedule. But that's where we are at this point, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Can I ask Steve a question?
Yes.
Actually, not about the project, but since I have you on there and it's Town Manager's Report. I've got a couple of residents asking about, since the crazy times were in and basically everyone's home, the compost is open Friday and Saturday. I've had some people asking, can we either add a day or adjust a day so they're both not Friday and Saturday? Because if somebody's doing yard work on Saturday and they don't get down there in time, they have to wait till the following Friday. And there's people, more people home during the week. And I probably had a handful of people ask me, is there any way that we could possibly either add a day or spread the days out a little bit more?
We can certainly look into it. Right now, we are on a, we've kind of divided the crews up throughout the week. I do have to man the facility while it's open. But I'm happy to look at it with Austin and discuss some possible scheduling. We have found in the past that, you know, opening it on Friday from 9:00 to 12:00, and then again, and then again, from 3:00 to 6:00 in the evening, gave people the opportunity, you know, if they had yard waste and they wanted to get there after work, it kind of worked out for some people. And again, it's open all day Saturday, 9:00 to 12:00, and then again, from 1:00 to 3:00. But I will certainly discuss with Austin if staffing levels, you know, if we can make some adjustments with the staffing that we have, you know, I'm happy to, you know, to do that. Again, it does need to be manned. I can't just open the gate. Otherwise, we end up with things in the wrong locations and stuff starts getting mixed. So I won't commit to it right now, but I'll certainly promise to look at it.
No, I appreciate it, and I'm not necessarily asking to extend hours, even if we could just spread out the hours we have, just because, you know, usually everybody's home on the weekend doing their stuff or Friday afternoon, but now everybody's home, it seems to be 24/7. Yeah, whatever you can do would be great.
Okay.
Okay. Is that the end of the report of the town manager?
Yeah, just if you want to do questions now or later type of thing, however you'd like to handle it.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute, Barbara. I'm not going to look for questions on the budget today because we just received the budget today. This is receiving it. The budget is going to go to the Finance Committee, the Finance Commission, and the council. The council's going to have four more meetings before we have to vote on this budget. So there's plenty of time to meet with the individual department heads and those commissions and do all the questioning on the budget. But if anybody has questions for Austin outside of the budget, would you please give us those questions now? Thank you.
My question is kind of general about the budget, and that is, is there a glossary that goes with it?
Absolutely. There's actually on that table of contents that Anna showed you, one of the items there is a glossary of terms. That's something that, under the GFOA, which is the group that, of accountants that do the distinguished budget award, they ask for a glossary there. That said, if there's a term you're unfamiliar with that you can't find an answer to, let in, and I know, and we'd gladly add it and potentially add it to the glossary as well.
Just, Austin, just to add to that, if any of the counselors would like just sort of a budget primer for those that are newer to this process, please feel free to reach out to me. I'd be happy to meet with you one-on-one and walk you through any questions that you have, just to help you become more familiar with the content and the language that's a little bit, you know, unfamiliar if you haven't used it a lot.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Austin or Anna or Steve? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the school department update. And I see Lisa is on, and can you unmute Lisa in case there's any questions? Lisa, how are you?
Good, how are you?
As everyone knows, the governor closed schools now until the end of June. I believe he said June 29th. Schools will be closed till the end of the season. I know that the school committee and Lisa are working on doing something for the seniors. They're still working on the FASO scholarships, which I think they're having a meeting on them on April 29th. And can you tell us what else is going on, Lisa?
Sure. So today, obviously, everybody knows the governor had announced to close schools for the remainder of the school year. We have been preparing, and although we anticipated this message, I have to be honest that it put me back on my heels for the rest of the afternoon because what we thought was going to happen became a reality. And that means a lot more work needs to be done to make sure our students stay engaged in this new form of remote learning at home. We're anticipating that the Commissioner of Education has informed us that he'll be putting out some additional guidelines for us around remote learning and the next step. He has had some recommendations and guidelines to get us to the point that we are at now in terms of the type of work, the amount of work that we're posting for students, the interactions that we're having with students, as well as grading and not grading, credit and not credit for some of the schoolwork. So now that we are going to be out for the remainder of the year, we are expecting that the Department of Education is going to produce some power standards, so some standards that they would like us to use to continue moving learning forward for our elementary school students. At this point, the recommendation has been to go deeper into the standards that we have already taught at the elementary level and make some local decisions around middle school and high school kids of continued learning. So we anticipate some guidance in the coming week from him on that. Our staff is ready to go and has been doing a lot of planning around that anyway, in the anticipation that we would be closed further. So I feel as though we're ahead of the game there, but it does take time as it has taken time to transition our students and families into a whole new mode of learning over a five-week period of time. And our teachers have been busting it out and working hard and communicating like they've never communicated before between each other, and learning how to do that with families. And we're very mindful of the different situations that our families have, some who are able to work with their students. Our middle school and high school kids are much more independent learners and don't require the parental support that our little ones do. And given the stressful time that we're in, we are very mindful of the fact that not every parent has the ability to sit with their child. And the commissioner has recognized that, too, and that is why we have been going slow to go fast. So that's where we are at. I had about an hour Zoom meeting today with seniors, our senior class advisors, with the principal of the high school and myself. And it was sort of started off sad because it was a reality check today that school wasn't opening. We had a bunch of sad faces, and we knew that, and we were sad, too. And we talked a lot about staying positive. There are certain things in life that we can control, and this is not one of them. So we're planning to put a positive step forward and get creative with each other in terms of what do these students want. They've spent 12 years getting to the point they're at, and we're not going to let them go out without some fanfare. So we are involving them in making those recommendations to us so that we can make some decisions that are things that the students really do want. So more to come on that. We have several meetings scheduled with them, some surveys going out to the entire class, and lots of research going on with them, doing some of that work about what's happening in other communities and how are students going to celebrate. We talked a little bit about how Winterp is unique. We have 128 kids in this graduating class. That's small. Winterp is also unique in that we're very connected, police, fire, DPW, and the schools. So as long as we're not breaking laws, and we talked a lot about breaking laws, we can't be breaking laws, but we can certainly be probably more creative than larger communities, given the support we have from our fire and police. So once we are able to make some decisions with the students around graduation, prom, and class night, which are the three major things, we will update the committee and the town council on that as well. And so that's where we're at right now.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Thank you for everything you do. And thanks for putting that letter out to all the parents today. I think you put a lot of them at ease with what you had to say in that letter.
Yeah, I had to do that letter quickly. That letter was done quickly, and I sent it out. And then my worst nightmare was the fact that it had two spelling errors in it. And two people checked it before it went out. And after I hit send, I swallowed hard and said, oh, Lord, I have to go back now and rewrite that and get it back out. But when you're moving quick to keep people in the loop, those things happen. So I'm going to take the mulligan on that one.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Lisa?
I have a question.
Yeah, I have a question.
First of all, thank you, Lisa. And it's, you know, one of the best, if not the best, event this town has is the, with the high school graduation. And that's incredibly sad for the seniors. And it's a hard pill to swallow for all of us, and that's extremely tough. But I do have a question. I'm not sure if it would be for Lisa, or maybe Anna, or even Austin. With the schools being closed now through June, does that have an effect, or will hopefully, maybe it will be adjusted, but would that have an effect on summer programs being run at the schools and parks and rec? Because we do hope at some point, getting closer to the summer, people will be back to work, parents will be back to work, and kids are going to need places to go. And does the, with the governor coming out saying schools are closed, does that have an impact on our enterprise funds per se, potentially the rink and maybe, and more importantly, parks and rec, as well as programs run in the schools? Does this prohibit the schools from running programs during the summer?
So I can answer the piece on the school. And again, it's another question that 311 superintendents in the Commonwealth had some of those very same questions with the commissioner this morning on the phone. In terms of opening the buildings, we're been told we're going to be given more guidance on that from the school's perspective. We run an ESY, an extension of the school year program, which is a mandatory program to meet the needs of our special education population. And if the, if there is a lift on our having school, then we'll be able to educate those students for the summer. If they don't lift that, then we probably technically can't run summer programs for students within the school building. So we are waiting for a little more guidance on that, but I think it's going to come down to what the governor has to say about gathering and space issues. That's the same for graduation, too, Jim. I mean, if there's some lifting on gatherings, you know, we're thinking about just, you know, some creative things about potentially using Miller Field. And our kids talked a little bit today about distancing themselves 10 feet from each other and not having adults on the field. It's just one of their thoughts. We're going to get a bunch of thoughts together before we make decisions. But, you know, until they tell us we can open the buildings, then I believe we can't. Austin, you can weigh in on that if you'd like.
Sure. So in terms of the rec programs, at this point, we don't know, unfortunately. The stuff with the governor, we're still under advisement through May 4th. That said, earlier today, he changed the stuff with the schools. So there's no saying when he could potentially change stuff or the other advisories that he has made with the state. That said, some of our neighboring communities in the Boston area, some are already starting to close events in June. Some have even gone as far as canceling fireworks in July already. So this is something that we can't necessarily make a read on right now of what summer programming would look like. If we have the opportunity to provide summer programming, we would like to provide summer programming. It's just if it's something that is advisable and safe at the time. So we're going to take it as these kind of regulations come down. And if we're given the opportunity to make a decision one way or the other, we'll make an assessment at that time. And hopefully, we can provide some programming. I know people are looking to get out of their houses, and especially kids need to get out energy.
We really don't have the authority to do anything right now as far as, you know, parks and recs opening up and any of those things opening up. Unfortunately, Sean said he's already getting a lot of cancellations from his flag football program, and is anticipating lower revenues due to the pandemic. So we're going to have to look at those enterprise funds in both the rec, the rink, and the rec if this continues much longer. Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Lisa?
Yes, I have a question for Lisa. Lisa, does every child in our school system have home access to a computer?
So that's a difficult question. What I can tell you is that every child who we know did not have access to technology, some way, shape, or form to do their schoolwork and access our online platforms, we have provided that technology support for. We've given out, I think, as of Friday, about 110 Chromebooks. And I'm sure there are students that are out there that we don't know that they don't have access. So the next step in our process is when we see the kids are not engaging online, not tuning in to the programs that we have up and running, we've been providing outreach to get to the family. Clearly, if we send them an email and they don't have technology, they're not getting the email. So we have resorted to sending letters to the physical home of those students and for a number of reasons, to check on them, to make sure they have what they need, whether it's food or technology. And so so far, we have not found that with the letters that we've sent. It's been, you know, some other extenuating circumstances with families as to why their students aren't engaging, but that's one of the ways that we're tracking students down. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Lisa, very much.
Thank you.
All right, old business. We have none, new business. Since we presented the budget tonight, I would like to have one of my colleagues make a motion to send that budget to the Finance Committee and the Finance Commission.
I would like to make a motion to send that to the Finance Commission.
Okay, and the Finance Committee.
That's what I said.
That's what I thought you said. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A second.
All right. All those in favor, let's take a roll call, please. You're muted, Denise. Denise. You're muted.
Okay.
He's back.
Councillor Gero.
Yes.
Councillor Flotkot.
Yes.
Councillor DiMarco.
Yes.
Councillor Christopher.
Yeah.
Councillor Honan.
Yes.
Councillor Conti.
Yes.
Councillor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under new business, as you know, you heard about the Board of Health. They had a meeting tonight, and they recommended an emergency order, an ordinance that everybody has received. If you had the latest copy that came to us from Denise's email, would someone make that motion?
Would you like to read the whole, would you like me to read the whole motion?
Yes. It's a lengthy, that's why I asked.
It is. All right, I will read.
Good enough insight to read it off here.
Yeah, fine. Emergency motion from Winterp Town Council, Town of Winterp, Declaration of Public Health Emergency, Emergency Order. Pursuant to the Declaration of a Public Health Emergency on March 20th, 2020, and all other authorizing statutes and regulations acting by and through its agent, authorized under Mass General Law, Chapter 111, Section 31, we, the town council, and the town council president and Board of Health, along with the Town of Winterp, Massachusetts, hereby order the following. Number one, all members of the public over the age of five entering any essential business, as defined by Governor Baker's COVID-19 executive orders, including but not limited to grocery stores, pharmacies, home improvement stores, public transportation, taxis, ride chairs, public safety facilities, and the like, must wear a cloth face covering, such as a fabric mask, scarf, or bandana over his or her nose and mouth. The cloth face coverings recommended are not surgical masks or need not be surgical masks or N95 respirators, which should be left for the medical professionals and first responders. Number two, all members of the public entering a restaurant for the purpose of picking up food or takeout must wear a face covering over their nose and mouth. Number three, all employees of all essential businesses shall wear a face covering over their mouth and nose when interacting with the public and within six feet of a coworker. Employers and employees must use previously described protocols and guidelines for personal protective equipment, such as gloves. If food is prepared at an establishment, a face covering shall also be worn by the employee handling the food. Number four, any resident, staff, or member of the general public entering or exiting a residential or commercial building complex of greater than one unit must wear a face covering over their nose and mouth while in common areas and communal spaces, and must exercise social distancing in these spaces accordance with CDC guidelines. Number five, essential retail establishments, as defined by Governor Baker's COVID-19 executive orders, must limit the number of customers and staff inside their establishment at any given time, so that social distancing of six feet may be maintained. All retail establishments must establish maximum occupancy loads in accordance with the guidelines. must establish maximum occupancy loads in accordance with the guidelines for grocery stores issued by Massachusetts Commissioner of Public Health on April 7. Maximum occupancy shall be posted at each entrance of the establishment and shall be readily visible for all members of the public. B, an employee of the retail shall be designated to ensure the maximum number of individuals inside the store is not exceeded. Customers queried outside of the store must maintain a minimum distance of six feet. C, any portions of the store requiring extra staffing solely dedicated to services that are deemed nonessential pursuant to Governor Baker's COVID-19 executive order shall be closed. D, reusable shopping bags are prohibited. Single-use bags are permitted and shall be provided at no extra cost to the customers. Six, every state, workplace, or other facility providing essential services and open to the public is required to place a sign no smaller than eight and a half by 11 inches and clearly visible on all the doors or any point of entry into the facility stating that the use of a mask or facial covering is required by every person entering the facility and at all times in the facility. A facility may impose stricter guidelines as it sees fit. Number seven, every store, workplace, or other facility subject to this order is authorized to refuse service to any person who fails or refuses to wear a mask or other facial coverings while in such facility. Number eight, operation of ice cream trucks is prohibited. Ice cream trucks will not be prohibited, will not be permitted to operate in the town of Winthrop until the Public Health Emergency Declaration issued by the Board of Health has been lifted. Brick and mortar establishments serving ice cream will be allowed to operate in accordance with the Governor's executive orders. Number nine, all members of the public are required to properly dispose of all their gloves, masks, and other personal protective equipment in appropriate disposal bins. Penalties for failure to properly dispose of these materials under the town of Winthrop's anti-littering and public nuisance ordinances shall be as follows. $50 for the first offense, $100 for the second offense, $300 for the third or subsequent offense. Fines for violations of both ordinances will be imposed. This emergency order does not apply to any persons who are engaged in permissible outdoor physical activity, riding in a personal vehicle, alone in a separate, single-spaced, or indoors with their own sheltered group such as family or household members. Although every such person is advised that the use of a mask or facial covering is encouraged. This executive order shall be effective beginning Thursday, April 23, 2020, at 6:00 a.m. and remain in effect until notice is given pursuant to the Board of Health's judgment that the Board of Health emergency no longer exists, that the public health emergency no longer exists. To the extent necessary, this order shall be enforced by the Board of Health officials, Winthrop police officers, and building inspectors.
Hey, Jim. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion on the motion? First of all, this motion was put together at the request of our Health Director, Meredith. Myself and Austin had a meeting, we talked about it. Letter went over to the Board of Health, the Board of Health had a meeting at 5:00. They unanimously adopted this. They even changed it, added some more wording to it, made it a little more stringent. But it is something that is going to help us save some lives. But any other discussion?
Jim, what was, I believe at the top of that thing, there was a, it said there would be a $1,000 fine that could be applicable to anybody not wearing a mask. Is that accurate?
It does say, please read this order carefully. Violations of or failure to comply with this ordinance, with this order is punishable by a fine of up to $1,000 pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 111. I think that that's the maximum, but I think they interpreted it differently and put 50, 100, and 300.
Okay, so my concern with this, and by the way, I think these are excellent recommendations. I think everybody should follow these. My only concern is I really feel, it feels unconstitutional to me to make somebody wear something on their face. That's the only concern I have. Everybody should do it. They should absolutely do it, but I don't think you can find somebody for not wearing a face mask. That's the only thing I have to say.
Any other comments?
I will make a comment, I guess, to Rob's point, and I agree with Rob, but maybe Phil or Austin maybe could chime in on this. But I know we did get an email from the Attorney General's office yesterday or two days ago, which said that wearing face masks could be, not necessarily required, it could be strongly advised, but not required. But is this superseding that?
Well, the advisory that we got from the AG was about Board of Health being able to make a decision on face masks and making it advisory. But so far, we have 17 other cities and towns that by doing it by an ordinance, which we're attempting to do it now, can make it mandatory and fine people for not doing it. Because it's an ordinance of the town, it's not an advisory.
And I guess my only other comment would be, especially for businesses, masks are very hard to come by. Are they, does the town have a, I don't know, an inventory of masks or, you know?
Resource?
I'm sorry?
Do they have a resource for these masks?
Correct. We have a resource for the masks for all the businesses.
No, I think that's what we're saying, cloth masks and bandanas. I believe you read exactly it is. And in the actual writing that's going to go out, there is a link to how to make the masks yourselves. And that'll be when we print this emergency motion and it gets posted, it will have those places and links and how to go and make a mask.
I could just jump in for a second. To answer Rob's question, when we talk about fines in this order, it seems like the fines that are listed, 50 for the first offense, 100 for the second offense, 300 for the third offense, those are in relation to littering of PPE. So I don't think we're fining people for not wearing masks. I think the fine would be if you not properly dispose of it.
I think that was on the bottom, covering the disposal of the masks and the gloves.
Yeah.
On the top, it says up to a fine of 1,000 for simply not wearing one. That's my, that's my only concern, is making it, Corey, because I think it's unconstitutional.
The reason that was put at the top, just so everybody is clear on that, that's not part of our ordinance, $1,000. We insisted it would only be 50, 100, and 300 in our ordinance, and that was the way it was written by the Board of Health. But the state law under Section 11131 allows for up to $1,000 fine. Our motion starts below that. And as you saw, Jim read only from the part that says all members of the public entering. All right. That's not included in our ordinance that's going out. That was just an advisory from the Board of Health, that that's what the state law calls for, fines of up to 1,000.
Okay.
My understanding by reading this is if someone was going into an establishment, walking by themselves, getting out of their car and going into an establishment, if they did not have a mask, there's not necessarily a fine, they just can't be served, and they have to leave.
They can be told they won't be served.
And I believe any business would have that right to say, we're not going to serve you if you don't come in with a mask. And I think that's why in the ordinance it does say that.
Can you see, I don't know if you can see this well. This is a sign that they are proposing, the Board of Health's proposed this sign to go into every store.
I'll throw it up on my computer. Give me a second. You don't need to do that.
I can see it, though, actually, pretty good.
It's it? All right. It's the right way to cover your face. And this sign is going to go onto every store because it's for the stores. Can you get it up, Austin, better than that?
Give me one second. I'm just pulling up Astrid's email. All right. Am I sharing my screen?
Yes.
Here be the notice. There we go. No mask, no service. Shows you, make sure to cover your mouth, make sure to cover your nose, both of them, not one or the other. And then when the order is effective. So it's going to be something along those lines. We may even be able to get some signs donated from a member of the community, which would be great. But the signage will be going out this week for this.
Okay, I hope that answers your questions. Does anybody have any other discussion on the issue? If not, I'd like to have a roll call vote to make this an emergency motion, so we can pass it in one meeting first, and then a roll call motion on the adoption of the emergency ordinance.
Okay. Counselor Agiero.
Yes.
Counsel Flotkott.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Christopher.
Yeah.
Counsel Honan.
Yes.
Counsel LaConte.
Yes.
Counsel Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Now, on the motion, as read by Jim, I don't think I'm going to read it again. Everybody knows what it has. You have it in front of you because it was just sent to you minutes before the meeting started. All those in favor, please respond to the roll call.
Counsel Agiero.
Yes.
Counsel Flotkott.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
No.
Counsel Christopher.
Yeah.
Counsel Honan.
Yes.
Counsel LaConte.
No.
Counsel Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Latieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Okay, passes six to two.
Okay, it's passed. Motion is passed. Thank you very much. Next, we have public comment. I see now that we have 17 people on chat. Is anyone preparing to raise their hand? Larissa, do you have anybody in?
I don't see anybody with raised hands. I don't see any Q and A. There is a caller on the phone. I don't know if they have that capability to raise their hand. I can connect over and ask them if.
Can you connect them? Just connect them.
Sure. Are you waiting for public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Hello.
It's Karen Travis.
Oh, Karen, how are you?
I am good. How is everybody else?
Very good, thank you.
I have been watching the entire meeting since 7:00. I guess I am a little bit disappointed, although I am sure the town manager and the CFO are happy with their pre-recorded budget. I guess my concerns are, what are we going to do if the state doesn't come through with the money that we need? You know, I've been doing this, guys, not for a few years, but I've been doing this for 28 years. And I've had two different systems. I've had the old, you know, town meeting type, and now this relatively new, it's not any longer new, town government. I am concerned. I am concerned because water and sewer, again, they're talking about increases. I will tell you, as I told everybody the other night, this would be a plague on the town. People cannot afford another increase in water and sewer. So something needs to be done. There are reserve funds, and please don't tell me there aren't. Because the increases were done years ago, or a year and a half ago, because of current problems that are being done down at the center. I am really concerned. I don't know what to say. I want to thank, though, everybody, you know, from Meredith Hurley, and the two chiefs, and the firefighters, and the police officers, and the people that work in the DPW, and everybody else that works for the town, because they are doing their utmost. But it seems like everybody in the town is not getting a true picture of what the budget is. I think we need to do something about that. You know, again, I'm going to say, I'm not a novice at this. I know what's going on. Please, please, look at this budget. Look at what's going on, and tell us what to do. Again, thanks, guys. Talk to you soon.
Thank you, Karen. As long as if anybody wants to answer, but knowing that you are on the Finance Commission, you're going to have, you know, a good look at this, and you're going to be in a meeting with us and Jim and the town manager and assistant town manager when we're talking about the budget. So I know you'll have your input at that point. Austin, Anna, do you want to respond to that?
Counsel President, I think Anna Friedman wanted to speak to that briefly.
Yeah. So Karen, I really hope that the new online budget tool will help you feel like you have more insight into the dynamics of the budget. Separately, on the water sewer rate, totally acknowledge that that is a very challenging issue, and certainly not a place that I would want to sort of have to be in to make a recommendation to handle. But I have to, it's my job, it's my duty to tell the community that based on the numbers for that budget, it would warrant an increase. However, as we said during the presentation, we are looking at all options to put on the table to mitigate that, and we're working to put forward an additional presentation on that issue, and we're looking to get additional information from the MWRA and others on considerations that might help us not have to take such a measure to increase it. So it's my role with the information that I currently have available to me, I have to tell you that when you add the math up, it indicates that we would need to do an increase, but we are taking all steps and evaluating all options to hopefully mitigate any possible adjustment that we would have to do there. Because certainly, we recognize that that is not an ideal situation to have to ask the community to pay more for their water rates, especially at this difficult time. So I do hope that you will just take to heart that we are making all efforts to do whatever we can to try to figure out the best approach on that. But I'm just, I'm obligated to report that that's when I add the numbers up, that's where we're at, and the volume of that is related to our MWRA assessment. So if there's some flexibility there, then that would help a lot.
To echo off of that as well, I was literally emailing with Fred Lasky, the director of MWRA during this meeting concerning relief on our MWRA assessment. We are trying as hard as possible to provide the most transparent budget available to this community. And we're not trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes. I hope more people interact with this budget than have in the past. We're putting out more information than has ever been available. I've gone through the old budget presentations and the old books. We are trying as hard as possible to put out as much information as possible so that you all are informed when you have to make the difficult decisions of voting on the budget. So there's nothing that's really happening here that is trying to kind of dissuade the public by any means. We're honestly, we're trying to be honest with the public because this is really difficult times that we're in, and there's no like easy solution to this type of stuff. This is a really, really hard time that we're going to be in. And there's no like one department takes this on the chin or anything like this. This is something that could legitimately impact the level of service that we can provide as a town. So hopefully, there's relief that comes from the state or federal government. But in the event that that does not come, Winthrop community and we as municipal government, it's our duty to spend the money effectively to the best of our abilities. So again, we're not, there's no any like stinkiness or anything like that going on. We're trying very hard to make sure that we allow everyone to interact with this budget and have a good understanding of how the money is being spent. Anna, do you have one more thing?
Yeah, just one more thing. So typically, at this point in the year, the House of Representatives would have put forward their budget proposal for FY21, but the state is delayed because they are, as I understand it, having to sort of go through their preliminary process of re-identifying revenues for next year. It's their consensus revenue process. They had a hearing on that last week and received the updates about potential significant impact to revenue. So what we're trying to do is actually be extremely transparent about the fact that all we have to base our numbers on.
transparent about the fact that all we have to base our numbers on right now in terms of aid from the state is what the governor put forward in his budget in January, which was obviously a very different outlook at that point. And so it's hard for us to sort of just pick at this point in time what further adjustments we'd recommend, you know, at this evening right now, based on the fact that we haven't seen more from the state and we don't have further indications from them on their timing and what, um, what adjustments they might need to make. But what we're trying to do is just let folks know about the considerations that we are weighing and how we, and what information we're seeking out to inform the decisions that will go on, um, this spring during the budget process.
Question?
Any other questions?
Yes, just to go back on, um, Karen's comment on the water, and maybe Austin, when you're, when we're talking to MWRA, I'm sure, and we discussed this a little in FinCom last week, we, we've always been told as a town that, you know, when the rates go up, the tendency is people use less water, which is actually a bad thing for us. Um, over these past couple of months and probably a couple more months into the future, the water usage must be incredibly high between, obviously, washing hands, taking showers, everybody's home, dishwasher's running, washing machines running. The water usage has to be incredibly high. And I think, I, I know in the past MWRA goes back, I think, three years and takes an average, but maybe it's something, Austin, that you could talk about also with the MWRA, saying that the usage is going to go up incredible. I, I would say it's incredible usage, probably upwards of 20 to 25%. I'm not sure. Uh, but they should also take that into account. And on, uh. Um, I think they're going to be looking at how, uh, they're working their formulas, um, across the entire network of communities. Uh, this is, again, something that, uh, MWRA, uh, doesn't have experience with, um, along with all the communities. So, um, Fred's going to be, I'm, I'm going to be working with, uh, Chief Flanagan, um, and Fred Lasky and the rest of MWRA to see, um, what we can do. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I see we have one question and the answer from Rosemary McCarty directed, I think, to Rob DeMarco. So do you want to read it and answer it, Rob?
Yeah, no, I would, I would, can you hear me? I was already reading it. And, uh, Rosemary, thanks for your comment. Um, I want to be clear. I think that the recommendations of the, the Board of Health are, are great. I think they should be things that everybody should follow. I'm well aware of everything going on. Um, it's smart. The only thing I, the only issue I have, like I said, is I think it is unconstitutional to find somebody for not wearing a facial covering. And that, that's why I'm against it. I mean, that's, I mean, people get fined $1,000 in places like Iran for not wearing facial covering. That shouldn't happen in the United States. But this is a great, I, I think it's great advisement what the Board of Health put out. I'm certainly going to wear a mask when I go into places because I want to keep people safe, and I advise everybody else to do it. I just had an issue with the constitution, uh, with it being unconstitutional in my opinion. That's all.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question, Rosemary.
Yeah, but I asked you to read your question, which you didn't.
Well, you know what? It was because I was actually typing back to her, um, while I was doing, I was trying to get back to you. So, Rosemary, I, I mean, please feel free to reach out to me if you have any other questions or any, any comments you want to share.
Okay. I just, um, since it did come in, I want to read this.
Yep.
It is not within your constitutional right to endanger those around you by not wearing a mask in designated areas. It is especially egregious to the health of those who are making your food, providing your groceries, and keeping you safe. I encourage Counsel DeMarco to keep his eye on the death notices in the major news papers in states like Georgia, Florida, Texas, and in the next month, and see if he still feels that the right to not cover your face outweighs the right to uncompromised, healthier, indeed staying alive. Okay. So, uh, thank you, Rosemary, and thank you, Rob, for giving your opinion back. Uh, are there any other questions? I see you answered three. Uh, do we have? No, we already got that one. I don't see any other question and answers. Are there any other phone calls? Are anyone raising their hand, Larissa?
One caller. I'm going to call, allow them to talk to see. Hold on. Hi, do you have a public comment?
Hi, it's Karen Travis again.
Hi, Karen.
You know what? I cannot believe that nobody is calling in to question this budget. I, I, I am there beside myself. Um, why is this? Do people not understand what we're going through?
Yeah, because up, up until now, nobody has seen the budget. I think they're going to need time to digest it. And that's why we have until the end of June to pass it, I checked, Karen. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions on it. It's just that from the presentation on TV that quickly and not having it in advance, people are not prepared to ask the questions they want to ask. Other than you, who's on the Finance Committee, that knows what's going on.
Well, there, there must be other people in the town that are, are going to question these things. Uh, you know, and for the town manager to say that you guys have until May 4th to digest this budget, how can you digest it if you don't have a hard copy? And I guess that is my other issue. Um, I cannot ever remember in the past not having a hard copy before you're asked to digest a budget. This is.
Hi, Karen. Just to speak with, to that, last year, I submitted the physical budget the day of the budget presentation, uh, was when it was ma, made available at the high school. Um, in addition, uh, many people like myself are actively act, are actively advocating to the GFOA, which manages the Budget Award, um, of the Distinguished Budget Award, which is the highest honor that a municipality can get concerning their budget. Um, they are going to take interactive budget submissions, um, to grade them on their effectiveness. Um, so, you know, this is the direction that budgets are going. I know people want to, um, kind of touch and feel something. But again, we're in different times now, um, just like with what we're dealing with, with COVID stuff. And, um, we are trying very hard because we know that our town hall is closed to the public right now, to give people the opportunity to interact with this budget. Um, if we did this in the past, we, unfortunately, we have a lot of books sitting in town hall or a library that are both closed to the public. So this way, we're trying as hard as possible to distribute the information to as many people as possible so that the community can actually interact with it. Um, not just the council and not just the Finance Committee, but the entire community. I look forward to answering all the questions, um, when there are detailed questions on items in the budget, um, not just blanket items about, I don't understand how this would work or something like that. Um, so we've put out all the information there. Um, the information that we have available is now available to the public for everyone to see and interact with, uh, just like we can.
And just to be clear, you know.
Let, uh, Karen, finish, please. Go ahead, Karen.
Well, you know what? Uh, uh, again, I, I cannot understand how you, the council, can sit there tonight and listen to this budget without having previously received a hard copy of the budget. It is beyond me. We are looking at a year of 2021 that could be very critical. I was around in 2008 when we had to make drastic changes. The changes that we had to make were astronomical. And we could be facing this same thing in 2021. And how the nine of you can sit there and not say to the town manager, why do I not have a hard copy? You know, and no matter what he says, and you know what, I am not going to criticize him because that is not my position. I am just saying that I do not understand how you can sit there and just listen to this. I'm sorry, that is my own opinion. It is not the opinion of the Finance Commission or the Citizens Advisory Committee that I am a part of. I am proud to serve on.
Barbara, when were you, or Karen, when previously were you presented with physical copies of the budget in the past? Just as a question.
I have always had a physical copy prior to it being presented to the public.
Can you give me a date? Do you remember?
Yeah, well, it's prior to this year. It's prior to this year, Austin.
Okay, so, so. For people that need them. But, uh, I'm upset we don't have it tonight, but we are going to have them for people that need them in the next three days. Is that correct?
Yeah. So this is Anna. I'm, I'm, I've been working extremely hard to get this done for the council. We are dealing with a 100-year level pandemic, and I had to drop everything that we were doing for an entire month and go back and redo the entire budget, which has been extremely difficult, while launching an entire online portal for the community because we wanted to make sure that everyone could see this information in light of the potentially very difficult conversations that we're going to have that Karen rightfully raises. I'm going, I've been working literally overnight through the night for days. I'm working to get that hard copy budget out to the town council. There's no effort to hide anything from anybody. Everything that is in that document is online, and I will be copying and pasting it for the next four days to get it into a document to print for all of you. This is not an effort to be disingenuous. I would appreciate if folks would just have some patience because we're dealing with unprecedented times, and we are not trying to be difficult in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you.
This is Barbara. I had a chance to look into the electronic version of this very briefly just before this meeting and realized that I need more time to go through it before I can ask my questions. And the presentation that we had was kind of blurry, so I couldn't really read the numbers on the screen. And I just feel that this isn't the time for me to ask my questions. I need to go back into that electronic version and delve through it for a few hours. Then I'll ask my questions.
That's exactly what I had suggested, that there be no questions about the budget because we just received it before coming online. And you're going to have three or four weeks to look it over and ask all the questions you want later. Now that it's been referred to committee, it's referred to the Finance Committee, the Finance Commission, Advisory Committee, they will all have opportunity to ask questions. And anyone that needs one will have a hard copy by the end of this week. Okay, are there any other people online waiting to ask questions?
I don't see anybody with their hands up. I see some, um.
I see 18 people on the chat, but I don't see, uh.
18 panelists, um, which are us and a few department heads, um, attendees. There's a, a few residents I can click on. They haven't raised their hand. I don't know if they have the capacity. If you'd like, I can ask them.
Yeah, ask, ask them if they want to say anything.
Hold on. Hi, do you have a, uh, public comment?
She's muted. She's muted.
Yeah, I think she might have muted herself. Hold on, let me ask, uh, the next person here.
Hi, Alicia.
All right. Um, hi, do you have a public comment for tonight? No. Um, that's Aldis.
Nothing, Laura, thank you.
No. You have, uh, Rosemary, do you have any public comment for tonight?
She's muted.
I've unmuted all of them. I, I don't know, um.
But have you unmuted them when you're talking to them?
No, I don't think so. Suzanne, do you have?
Larissa controls it, so.
Yeah.
Uh, let's, uh, let's, we can move on.
Yeah, I've un, I've tried to unmute them all, except for the two department heads that are on there.
And you won't.
The folks that are on, online want to, uh, type a chat or enter a question and answer, you can do that. That's a di, different way in case you don't want to talk.
Okay. Not seeing any. I, I think we'll move on. Uh, the next issue is public relations, upcoming events. Austin, do you have any to announce? Or if not, any other counselor?
No, I do not.
Any councils have any public relations events? With this pandemic, there really isn't any public gathering or events going on. All right, Alex?
Not an event, Mr. Council President, but I just want to take a minute to recognize, um, the Winter High School class of 2010. We heard from the superintendent today about that unfortunate news. And, um, this is actually supposed to be, uh, my 10-year high school reunion year. And I was thinking about, um, you know, the last few months of my career at Winter High School and how important those were to me. And, um, I just want the class 2020 to know that, uh, we're thinking of them and, uh, throughout these unprecedented and untraditional last few months of school, so.
Mr. President, if we could just interrupt for one second, the, uh, the health nurse would just like to clarify an earlier comment or question asked.
Yeah, so, um, the question about the demographics of the cases, the age demographics of cases that have tested positive, um, for COVID-19, I have those figures in front of me. And, um, the age group with the highest prevalence right now is the age of, um, 50 to 59. Um, and then followed closely behind with 16 cases, um, in age 60 to 69.
Okay, thank you very much for updating that. All right, Alex, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
By Counsel Leteri, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Christopher. Any discussion? Here we are. Please take a roll call vote, Denise.
Counsel Regiro?
Yes.
Counsel Flotcut?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yeah.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti?
Yes.
Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Leteri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes. Thank you all very much for your patience. Uh, it was a long meeting. It was a long presentation. Please go back, take a look at it, be prepared for the next meeting to ask questions on the budget, and we're going to move forward. Uh, thank you all so much. God bless you all and stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one, everyone.
Take care.
Stay safe.